This meeting is being recorded.
And you're on, Jane.
Okay, thank you, Tina. Good evening. We've already started the meeting in open session before going into executive session. We're now reconvening in open session. Per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, that's Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20. The public will not be allowed to physically access this school committee meeting, but members of the public can access the meeting via Montague Community Television Broadcast. The extension of the emergency open meeting law provisions were signed into law as Chapters 20, Section 20 of the Acts of 2021, and this order has been extended by order of the governor until March 2025 as of Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023. The school committee reserves the right to implement additional remote participation procedures and will notify the public of these procedures as it is practical to. Any members of the public who wish to join the meeting may do so by accessing the link to be found on the Gill-Montague Regional School website under School Committee Notices and Agendas for upcoming meetings, and it would be listed under tonight's school committee. We are now live streaming as well as broadcasting on MCTV, and a recording of the meeting will be available on MCTV and the district website after this meeting. If you are in the Zoom audience, please keep your camera and microphone off unless you are joining us for a discussion. This is the time we'd like to welcome any visitors in the Zoom audience. It would also be time for public participation, which has his policy BEDH that has been reinstated in order to hold public participation remotely, and we have not received any requests tonight, so we will offer that at each meeting. Moving on to the important events, Brian. You're muted, Brian.
Been a while since I've done that.
I know.
Tomorrow night is the concert at the High School Middle School Spring Concert, and that will be in the theater at 6:30 PM. The prom is Friday evening at Look Park. Turner's Falls High School Unity Day. If you have an opportunity to stop by and visit the school, I think John and Jane may have wandered over for the event last year, but it's a great event that's put on by Student Council. A week from Thursday, Thursday, May 18th at 6:00 PM, there'll be Sheffield Elementary Talent Show, and then the Senior Walk Through on Thursday, June 1st, Senior Awards Night, and that will be at 10:45 AM. Senior Awards Night at 6:30 PM, and then graduation is Friday, June 2nd at 6:30 PM.
Okay, thank you. Any other additions or things that people have heard about we didn't know already? Thank you. I believe we're going to see Sina, and she's going to do her student rap report. Hi, Sina.
Hello. All right. So Mr. Beck covered a lot of the different things that are going on for Student Council right now. So our main thing we've been working on is getting Unity Day all planned and set. And our Spirit Week, which we have leading up to Unity Day, I've covered that a few different times, but just to quickly recap. Monday is going to be Music Monday, so people can dress up as their number one artist on Spotify. Tuesday is Dress Up Like a Teacher Tuesday, so students can dress like a teacher and teachers can dress like a student. Wednesday, I believe, is Salad Dressing Day. So we assigned each grade level a different salad dressing. So for example, I think one grade is ranch dressing, so they're going to dress kind of like Western. We have Caesar dressings, they're going to dress in like togas and things like that. We have blue cheese, they're all going to dress in blue. And then there's Thousand Islands, and they're going to dress like Hawaiian. White Lie Wednesday, actually, and that's going to, the dressing day is Thursday. White Lie Wednesday, you dress in all white, and then you write like a lie about yourself, so that makes sense. So like if you're like really tall, you could write, "I'm short," or something like that. I don't know. I don't know if people are going to write for that. I'll be very curious to see. And then Friday will be just like Blue and White Day, because that's going to be Unity Day, and we all have our Unity Day t-shirts, so those are awesome. That day, we also have a talent show. It's going to be so great. I love, everyone loves the talent shows. They're just super fun, because you just have your peers going up and doing what they love, and it's super awesome. And then, yes, we have prom coming up this week. That's pretty, I can't believe that's coming up so fast. But yeah, the junior classes and planning that have been doing a great job. They've also been selling concessions at the baseball games, and we've been making a lot of money off of that. That's been great, really good fundraising, you know, simple and effective. Other than that, I believe this week we're starting with the course selection process for next year. And today, this isn't exactly Student Council, but it's something that a lot of Student Council people did. Mr. Beck was there, actually. We had our TAB training, so basically that stands for Training Active Bi-Standers. Bi-Standers, and a while ago, some certain students were selected, and we did a training where they taught us about just like bullying and situations like that, and how to stand up against them, and we learned different units, and then we are presenting those units to the middle school. So we had a few different groups today go to middle school and go to different classrooms and teach them what we learned. I was in one of those groups. It was a really great experience, because you know, you can sit in like a, like a room and learn something from somebody, but then it's a whole different experience to go and teach that back to someone else, and I think that like really solidifies it. And it was really great experience, you know, getting to talk to members of our school community that we may not really see that often normally. So yeah, it was pretty awesome. Yeah, that's all I have for today.
Thank you, Sina. And I do want to add that the, each of the trainers, they were nine high school student trainers today, did a really, really fantastic job delivering the first unit. The second unit will be on Thursday, and we have still four additional lessons to schedule before the end of the year. But I thought you guys did a great job, and the sixth grade team was very impressed with the high school trainer, so thank you.
Yeah, it was a good time. Glad they had us.
Thank you so much, Sina. We appreciate it. Sounds great. Okay, Brian, Superintendent's Report.
So this past Sunday was the Hillcrest Spring Festival. Wanted to say thank you to the Friends of Hillcrest, who organized a wonderful community event. We would also like to thank the Turner's Falls Fire Department and the Montague Department of Public Works, who collaborated to bring a Touch a Truck experience to the festival. Thank you also to the Turner's Falls Police Department, specifically School Resource Officer Dan Minor and his dog Mac. Thank you to the high school student volunteers from Ms. Clum's class, and also thank you to Faith Clum for organizing that community support event. They were there to assist the young children with craft activities. Thank you to Angela Revati Leonard and Michaela Skubal from the Carnegie Public Library, who are also in attendance. And thank you to Teresa Bailey, the Hillcrest Custodian, for helping out to make this weekend event possible. I also wanted to thank some folks for what was a very successful first, hopefully, annual elementary mathematics night. Approximately 100, 150 people attended the first elementary mathematics night on Wednesday, April 26th, in the Sheffield Cafeteria. Congratulations and thank you to Jean Powers, as well as elementary math interventionists Veronica Hurst, Nikki Henderson, and Lauren Steer for their hard work in organizing and running the event. This was a wonderful community night that really highlighted student learning with their families, and in the report, there's a link to a video of the event. And fortunately, she's just arrived just in time. I was worried that you weren't going to make it to the meeting, Hamena. But I wanted to say thank you to Hamena Cabeza de Pareja. In the fall of 2022, Hamena, our Spanish family liaison, completed the interpreter and translator in education workshop series through UMass Amherst College of Humanities and Fine Arts Translation Center. In spring of 2023, Hamena also completed the interpreting for special education workshop series. Both these programs are designed for bilingual school staff who offer in-school interpreting and translation services. Both workshop series required instructional workshops, ethics training, interpreter listening sessions, critique, role play, discipline-specific language and process in special education, as well as evidence and accuracy of document translation, regional networking, and more. Hamena is a wonderful asset to our school district and our community, and we're so pleased that she eagerly participated in these trainings to continue to build upon her many, many professional skills. We wanted to just take a moment to recognize her for the many contributions she makes to our district and the support she provides for our families. Hamena, you are truly a superstar, and I know that's the only reason Diane's here at the meeting, otherwise she'd be working, but I know she's going to want to say something about you as well.
Yes, thank you, Brian. I just wanted to acknowledge Hamena, and I do. The work that she does in the district goes beyond measure, and her willingness, her eagerness to take on this training at UMass was just, just, you know, extraordinary. I mean, it required a lot of work on top of really busy days, and to add, you know, a 45-hour program in the, in the fall semester, and then a spring semester with another 45-hour program and the requirements. And she and I were talking earlier today, and the homework, it's hard to add homework into your night when you have children and you're running around, and she just did an amazing job, and I just, you know, kudos to Hamena. Thank you so much for all the work that you do in the district, and I just thought it seemed very appropriate to recognize you as such.
Thank you.
Have a good night, Hamena.
Thank you so much.
And I had just two more very brief notes. One, I wanted to say thank you to Athletic Directors Adam Graves of Turner's Falls High School and Joe Gamache of Franklin County Tech. The baseball and softball teams competed last night here at, under the lights at Turner's Falls High School, and they held a Pass the Hat fundraiser and raised more than $620 for the Western Mass Food Bank. So thank you to both of those athletic directors for undertaking that and pulling students into a system with it during the event. And then last Wednesday, I'm sorry, last Friday, some school committee members did also meet with students. Because of, the first Friday of June is graduation, there won't be another meeting with students this year, which is why I wanted to encourage members of the committee, if you have the opportunity, to consider stopping by Unity Day.
Thanks, Brian. I would like to say the meetings that we've had pretty much monthly, Friday mornings with students are just awesome. I can't think of another word. I mean, the students are so thoughtful and so helpful, and it's just, it really makes my week when we have a meeting with them on Fridays. They're great. We can ask particular questions about things, how, how they're going, what they're thinking about them. We usually cover several different topics. We talked about the fundraiser, the idea of regionalization, how block scheduling was working, all those kinds of things. It's amazing what we can get to in half an hour. They're really great. And I know Heather and John joined us this week, correct? Yes. Anything either of you would like to add? John? You're muted. You're muted.
I, one thing that struck me, it's sort of a technical thing, is their insight on blocks. And I was almost thinking, I, I know it's probably a big shift. I mean, blocks are so institutionalized, they're in with the, you know, contract and everything. But I'm thinking, as, you know, we're a small school district, and we have a hard time with with program offerings, and I'm wondering if some eventual transition to a more traditional seven-period schedule might accommodate some of those more difficult program. But I, you know, I know that's just an awful lot of institution that's standing up behind the blocks, and but just as the kids were saying, sometimes, you know, I think it's the more precocious kids who take advantage of the block system, and some of the kids were saying, you know, there's some empty space in blocks. And that was definitely my experience when we tried blocks in middle school many years ago, or a year or two, and then, you know, backed off. I know this is high school. But I thought that was a fairly significant thing that they said. And I also thought that kind of fit into that letter we received from the math teacher about how difficult it was to provide the programming that the students want. So I'm just wondering, in the abstract, if you're in a traditional seventh-period system, is it easier to do programming, a variety of programming then? But I know everything's set up for block. That was just the thought that struck me.
There is a committee that's been formed, an ad hoc committee, that Principal Barnes and Jean Powers are working with members of the faculty to discuss the schedule. And that work is ongoing, and that's part of the reason why, John, is to take into consideration the feedback of students.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian. That's good to know. Thanks. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Can I say something?
Yes, please.
Thank you so much for your really kind words, and that was, made me really happy. And always I try to do my best for the school district, and I love my job. And thank you for all the support I receive, for the teacher, for the superintendent, the principals, everybody. That would make me my job easy, too. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Hamena.
Now, have a great night.
You, too. Okay, thank you. Joanne, Business and Operations Report.
Okay, I have very little for you. I have, just as I had a couple of weeks ago, I had the Montague Town Meeting handout. I have the Gill Town Meeting handout for you in the packet today. So on the front, you can see what the total budget is, the assessment, you can see the range of assessments. The revenues are in the middle, and the expenses at the bottom. Those are the same as they were for Montague. And then on the back, we have educational highlights. And I put Gill's capital projects that are ongoing. We're not having any requests this year for more capital projects. And then the enrollment information at the bottom of the back of the page. And that's, that's all I have today.
Thank you, Joanne. That's a really nice, you know, comprehensive one page of a lot of information. Thank you very much.
One, one of the things that we'll share if they ask us at Gilltown Meeting, again, if you look at the enrollment trends, that we've established good momentum over the last couple of years, and it's really manifested itself this year to turn around the choice-out and charter-out situation, that there's a change of 80 students this year, so that 54 fewer students are going out on choice or charter, and 27 more students are coming in. And so we want to be able to keep that momentum going.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Great, great statistics. Okay, moving on, School Committee reports, the Warrant Subcommittee approval, I will need a vote, and if it's acceptable, we will vote the two warrants together. They're both accounts payable, which is paying our bills. The first is fiscal year 23. AP Warrant Number 3348, it's dated 5/10/2023 for $11,471.02. The second is fiscal year 23, AP Warrant Number 3349, dated 5/10/2023 as well, in the amount of $230,094.95. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Okay, I think I got Heather and Bill. Did I get you two first?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. I'll take a roll call vote. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Christina? Christina?
My internet, my internet froze, I'm sorry.
Okay.
It's my turn, yeah.
Well, thank you. Good. It was muted for a minute while you were, very good. Thank you. And myself, yes. So that was unanimous. Okay, moving on to business this evening. Addressing issues of equity, I think we have Jean Powers with us for that. Hi, Jean.
Hi, everyone. So I'm going to share my screen and jump right in. Okay, so an update on the work of the Culturally Responsive Practices Leadership Academy. So again, this is a three-year process, and we are close to the end of our first year. Tomorrow is one of our next planning days for the team with the consultants from Black Print Incorporated. And a couple of weeks ago, we had a site visit with them, and what that was, was we observed some classrooms at the high school level and at Hillcrest. We were hoping to get to some of the other schools, but it was also an MCAS date, so we ended up just sticking with those two locations. And really what it was, was the Black Print woman came, kind of overviewed, kind of one of these, an equity tool that they use to kind of look at different equity components across a school and a district as a whole. And we focused in on the instructional practices pillar, and you can see kind of the five bullet point, bullet points, excuse me, of things that we focused on. And so we went into three different classrooms at the high school and two classrooms at Hillcrest, and we did an observation about 15, 20 minutes, and we just took notes as the team members of what we noticed, what we saw, and then we did a debrief at the end, and it was really eye-opening to be able to, you know, I get into classrooms all the time, but to really stop and focus in on a lens that relates to culturally responsive practices was really a valuable tool. And we are currently waiting on the report, so we did kind of a feedback afterwards, and so the woman from Black Print is going to do a report to give initial feedback on, you know, what we're seeing. And again, it was a sample size, but it's kind of a baseline for the work over the next two years. So we will continue to get into classrooms as a team with and without the Black Print support to be able to really see how we're doing as, as a district. And then we'll look at the other pillars related to other components of the district, like policies and procedures. So it was a really, really great experience, and I look forward to seeing what they have to share with us about what they found. And then I just wanted to mention summer programming. So we're continuing to do our expanded invitation-only summer programming with District SIR funds. And, you know, this, I often talk about summer programming when it relates to pandemic learning loss, but it also relates to issues of equity as well. You know, we really are looking for students that are struggling academically, that need that additional support. We've asked teachers to do recommendations based on student needs, and we've done outreach to families in multiple modes to try to get all of our enrollments secured, but it's a free program. We do provide transportation for students that live in Gill and Montague. Breakfast and lunch is included in academic and social-emotional learning support throughout the day. So I just wanted to highlight the summer program in that, again, it's an expanded program, because we have the SIR funds. So we've been able to, over the past couple of years, open it a little bit more to students who may not necessarily have like an extended school year on their IEP plan for special education, but to kind of get that next level of students who need some additional support, so that they are able and ready to start the next year with success. So those are the only two things I have to report on today. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions, Jean?
Thank you very much, Jean.
Yes, thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
See you tomorrow.
The next item under business is the discussion of the Superintendent's Evaluation. And what I have is the aggregate document, evaluation document, and none of us saw or discussed the, all of the details of each person's evaluations of Superintendent Beck's work this year until this evening, because it needs to be held in an open meeting, which is what we're doing now. And then the data will be sent on to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education at the state level. So I will read I will read a summary of the collated information, and a special thank you before I do to Tina Mahaney for setting up the computer program and helping those of us when we got stuck, and to Tara McCarthy, the Administrative Assistant in Superintendent Beck's office for collating all the information, because she is, is able to do that, to help us. It, it really isn't seen by any of the members at all before the meeting, which is very helpful, and she did a great job. We appreciate it, both of them. The summary of the 2023 Superintendent Evaluation for Brian Beck, Superintendent of Schools for Gill-Montague Regional School District, submitted to the Gill-Montague Regional School District School Committee. Guided by the Massachusetts Model System for Educator Evaluation by Desi, in accordance with the requirements set forth in the Massachusetts Educator Evaluation Regulations, that's 603 CMR 35.00. The members of the Gill-Montague Regional School District School Committee evaluated Superintendent Brian Beck on the following main components. The first, his established annual goals, professional, student learning, and district improvement goals. Second, the focus indicators for each of the four standards of performance. And then third, an overall summative performance score. Following is a summary of each of the rated components. Under the professional practice goal, which was complete and submit a statement of interest for a proposed school building project for a new Hillcrest Elementary School, all the members rated him as meeting his goal. Under the student learning goal, which is implement regular progress assessments for content area writing skills at the secondary level, three members rated him as having made significant progress, while two rated him as having met his goal. And I should have said to begin with, we have had five responses to the evaluation. The third was a district improvement goal, and that was to establish a standing wellness committee and update the district's wellness policy. Three members rated him as having made some progress, one having made significant progress, and one having met the goal. For each of the educational standards, based on his focus indicators, we also had to rate progress. The first was standard one, which is instructional leadership, and four members considered him proficient, and one considered needs improvement. Standard two is management and operations. Four members rated him proficient, while one rated him as exemplary. For standard three, which is family and community engagement, four members rated him as proficient, while one rated his performance as exemplary. And for standard four, professional culture, all five rated him as proficient. Based on the ratings for progress toward goals and performance on standards, the rate overall summative performance was that everyone rated him as proficient, and that information will be sent on to Desi. Members were welcome to make comments at any point, and especially as a summative comment, and if anyone would like to make any comments at this point on the committee, you're certainly welcome to. But all of the information that we filled out, including the comments, will be given to Superintendent Beck now that we have discussed it at the meeting. They will go on to him so he can read them. Any questions or comments or anything at all? Okay, it, it was really a good, good performance evaluation. Congratulations, Superintendent Beck, and
Thanks, everybody.
We just keep on making you work tonight, so here we go. The next item is a discussion of upcoming MASCE events. I guess this is a really good place for me to ask all of the members. I hope you are all getting emails or perhaps even paper mailings from at MASCE, which is the Mass Association of School Committees. If you are not, if you could let me know afterwards, we will make sure they have your name and address to send those to. They give us information about upcoming workshops. There's information will be coming about the annual meeting in Hyannis in November, which this year is November 7th through 10th, which has, over the several days, there are many workshops about all kinds of things that school committee members are interested in and responsible for. There's also a delegate form that has been sent. At that meeting, one of the members of each school committee that attends is entitled to be a delegate to vote on resolutions. The, you will, those will be forthcoming. The, you will, those will be forthcoming and we'll discuss those at a meeting in the future. Um, every year MASC comes up with resolutions that they send on to the legislature about things they are in favor of doing or changing. Um, they're just, the resolutions are simply suggestions, I guess is the word I'm looking for. Um, unless someone at the legislative level decides to uh put them in a bill form at some point. But we do have communications with them and there are things that are important to educators in general in the state. Um, and also for the conference itself, anyone on the school committee who'd like to attend um at a later date, the school committee will vote um our approval to pay for their members, their attendance. Um, and that will be um upcoming before too long. So if people are interested, uh, the committee pays for the workshops, the hotel and also reimburses for mileage. So we'll check on that. Um, and I have to admit, I missed something here quite important. We discussed the evaluation, but we actually did not take a vote on it. So that is probably a good idea. So pretend I didn't talk about MASC. And I will entertain a motion to vote to uh accept and approve the superintendent's evaluation.
So much.
That is Heather. Thank you.
And I'll second.
And John. Heather moved, John seconded. We'll take a roll call vote. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Nick?
Yeah.
John?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
And myself. Yes. Thank you all. So we will be mentioning other MASC things as we go along. Um, there also is a website which has a lot of information if you're interested in going online and checking that at times. Um, but please let me know later if you're not getting any communications from them and we'll make sure they have your information. Thank you. Um, next item is, we have some minutes to approve. I believe we have two sets of minutes if I'm remembering correctly. They are for the May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three meeting and the June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting. And if it's acceptable, I'll entertain a motion to approve them together.
Jane, uh, you jumped ahead. Those are our next scheduled meetings.
But they're the next scheduled meetings as opposed to
Oh, I'm sorry. I was, I, I, these allergy things have not made me clearer mentally, I must say.
I, I, I all of a sudden panicked, wondering if I, I failed to uh link something to the agenda so people could see it.
Well, and I was looking at my packet and thinking, I don't see them. How did I miss those? I just, yeah, good, good observation. No. I think um, I'll be glad when allergy season is a little less with us. I also took a walk today, probably a big mistake, but I got some fresh air, which was necessary. So we will have agenda planning next week, probably Tuesday. If there's anything you'd like us to put on the agenda, please let us know. And yes, indeed, the dates of the next scheduled meetings are May twenty-third and June thirteenth. May twenty-third, we will have a regular meeting and at that meeting, we will do reorganization for officers as well. Because we have decided that um previously. Okay, in that case, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So much.
Heather, thank you.
I'll second.
And John, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Christina?
Yeah.
And myself, yes. Thank you all. I think we're done.
All right, thank you.